Good afternoon. Let's bring to order the Monday, September 16th, 2019 meeting of the Board of Union County Commissioners. And we'll begin as usual with our invocation. And Stoney, if you'll lead us in the invocation, please, sir.
Thank you. Show me if you'd like. Laura, thank you for bringing us here and thank you for this wonderful day. Thank you for all that you've done for us, for sparing us from the hurricane that just came through. And we hope that you will be with us as we do the business of the people of Union County and hope that it be pleasing in your sight. Amen.
Show me a pledge.
A pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our, in the business of liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have the pleasure of recognizing our employees, their service awards. And we'll start with those with five years. Ava Strong with Financial Services, Craig Greenlee with Health Department, Grant Moore with Public Works, Angie Chambers with Social Services, Desiree Totten with Social Services, Tatiana Valencia with Tax Administration. Next, we have 10 years of service. Catherine Coffey, Nina Chaffin with the Library, Dorothy Thomas with the Sheriff's Office. And that's our 10 years. Next, we have 15 years with Jason McBride with Public Works, Victoria Adcock with the Sheriff's Office with 15 years. Next, we have 20 years. Christie Ford with Environmental Health. And then we have a number with 25 years this year. Meredith Elliott with Environmental Health, Trina Horn with Financial Services, William Watson, County. William Watson.
Who is that?
I didn't catch that one. I was previewing. We had the service for his 25th earlier, but the manager has 25 years now with us. And then Larry Davis, Public Works, and Stephen Crump with the Tax Administration. We'd like to thank all of these for their continued service and dedication to Union County for all these years. And we have some new. Blake, would you like to introduce some new employees we have?
Sure. I'd be very happy to. Thank you, Chairman. First, I want to say thank you for the faith that the Board and the County Manager and the Secretary have put in our office to give us the resources and the positions required to do a great job for the county. And we've been very fortunate to hire three new folks very recently. You want to come up? Okay. I want to introduce all three of our teammates. And in the budget that just passed most recently, we were approved for a mid-year position that would be filled through the mid-year, so we have four full positions when we're fully staffed.
Okay.
I want to start with Mary Namala. Mary has been with us now for seven weeks. Mary, most recently, was an Operations Analyst with the Jacksonville Electrical Authority in Florida, and she worked as an analyst within the city of Jacksonville, Florida also. She has an MBA in Finance and an undergraduate degree in Computer Science from Osmania University in India. And she's a great asset to the team. We're very happy to have her with us. After Mary, we have Greg Artman. He's been with us for four weeks now. So we're a very well-tenured staff here. Greg's been here four weeks. He most recently served as a Director of Business Services at the University of California, Riverside. He has an MBA from Cal State Fullerton. And he actually retired from the university system in California and was a very young retiree. Retired here to be with his family and decided that playing golf and substitute teaching wasn't all he wanted to do. He had some more left in the tank, so he's going to give it to us here in Union County. We're happy to have him. And then third is Adrian Rory, and she has less than one day on the job. She started just this morning. So she's our newest teammate. She most recently served as the Assistant Town Clerk and Land Use Administrator at the Town of Wingate, and she has an MBA from Wingate University. So we're very happy to have our team together and looking forward to filling that final fourth position. And very appreciative for the support that you all have given to us to help us get to where we are today. Thank you.
Congratulations. Welcome to the team.
Thank you.
Okay. I hadn't got over that manager's office. Next, we have a public hearing on urbanized area grant application. And we'll open that public hearing. And Michelle, can you help us a little on that, please?
Yes, I'll give you just a brief description, Mr. Chairman and Board. The Urbanized Area Formula Funding Program makes federal resources available to urbanized areas for transit capital and operating assistance in urbanized areas for transit-related planning. Eligible activities include planning, engineering, design, and evaluation of transit projects and other technical transportation-related studies. Capital investments in bus and bus-related activities such as replacement, overhaul, and rebuilding of buses, crime prevention and security equipment, and construction of maintenance and passenger facilities, as well as capital investments in new and existing fixed guideway systems, including rolling stock, overhaul, and rebuilding of vehicles, track, signals, communications, and computer hardware and software. Union County will receive up to $315,998 for FY '21. Our staff at Transportation will develop a list of activities for these funds, which include paying for 50% of the cost of the existing Union County Express Bus Service, expanding demand response service capacity in the urbanized portions of the county, and purchase of a security-related item as required by the 1% security minimum requirement in the grant. I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
All right. Thank you. We have no one signed up to this speak. Is there anyone in the audience that didn't get an opportunity to sign up? If not, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and move on to our next item. Our next item is the Non-Urbanaized Area Formula Program Grant Application and Consolidated Capital. And we'll open a public hearing. And
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Michelle, would you help us get in, please?
Yes. With this item, these annual grants are intended to provide financial assistance for the support of public transportation services, which are open to the general public on a regular and continuing basis. The 5311 funds can be used for the cost of transit planning activities, transit operations, and the purchase of capital, equipment, or facilities to aid in the provision of transit services in rural and small urban areas, as well as provide funds for state-level administration. The administrative funding level for FY 2021 will be $231,556, with the percentages as follows: federal 80%, state 5%, and our local match will be at 15%, or $34,735. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. We have no one sign up. Is there anyone in the audience that didn't get an opportunity to sign up? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Okay. Informal comments. We've had no one sign up for informal comments. Is there anyone that didn't get an opportunity to sign up? All right. Let's move on. Additions, deletions, and/or adoptions to the agenda. We've got several items. One, I'd like to move item 23 from the consent agenda. It's the upset bid process. Make it item 25A. And then we've got several additions. We've got a consent agenda item, Town of Marshallville Development Block Grant Resolution they would like to add. And we passed out some information for the Commissioners early on that. And that's the revised list.
We have removal of item number seven at the request of the Sheriff's Office.
It's not the bottom. Yeah, we're going to get it. We've got, on a regular agenda, we're going to add an item, a request by Indian Trail Town Council for a joint meeting with the Board of Commissioners. That'll be 25B. And as the manager pointed out, we're going to delete item seven, the law enforcement vehicle purchase for 2019 Ford trucks with installed emergency equipment. So we'll remove that from the agenda for a later date. Any other items we need to address?
Motion to approve. The agenda is amended.
Okay. We have a motion. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have a motion to adopt the consent agenda as amended?
So need.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We have no old business. Under our new business, item 25 is our employee survey. And Julie, would you like to come explain, please, ma'am?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, everyone. This is a brief update on preparations for the 2020 Employee Climate Survey. The Human Resources Office, along with County Management and the Public Information Team, have begun meetings and preparations for the 2020 Employee Survey. As you will recall, almost two years ago, the Board initiated discussions regarding an employee survey and accepted the recommendation to conduct an in-house survey administered by the HR Office. This is going to be using the Federal Employee Viewpoint Survey, or FEBs for short, as we like to call it. This survey has been used by the federal government for about a decade and will provide the county some comparison data and benchmarks to look at organizations in the government that are entities of the same or similar size to Union County. We used the FEB survey with minor modifications in June of 2018 to release the first Employee Climate Survey of this kind to county employees. This is about a 70-question survey that solicits information in several categories, such as leadership in the organization, employee satisfaction, work unit division, personal work experience, and supervision. The survey is released to all county departments and all county employees, full-time and part-time. The aims of the survey remain to administer a valid survey, ensure respondent anonymity, obtain an independent analysis of the survey data, and provide survey reporting that will foster workplace climate improvement over time. The short version of the project timeline is included in your agenda material and includes a projected release date of the survey for a three-week period in late January 2020, and it would run through mid-February. The overall response rate and survey results were favorable in 2018. However, there are always ways that we can improve. One of those will be an effort to increase our response rate this year to the survey. In 2018, the response rate was 65% across the organization. And if we just looked at full-time employees, that was a 72% response rate. We will again be using outside consultants to analyze the survey data and provide reporting to the Board. We anticipate having the survey results available in March and reporting to the Board and employees in that same March timeframe. As a follow-up to the 2018 Employee Climate Survey, the major initiative resulting from that survey to address areas of opportunity was an effort to build a high-trust and high-performance culture in the organization. After a short survey in February of this year to gain insight on key trust factors and establish a benchmark of how healthy the organization is in the area of trust, the Directors and County Management began work in this area. Activities have been ongoing over the past year in building trust and have consisted of various meetings, trainings, goal-setting, pulse questions, and short video trainings that all employees have had the opportunity to participate in. We will be conducting a follow-up trust survey in late October to gauge any improvement with building trust in the organization, and this report will be available to the Board later this year. And I'm happy to answer any questions, if you have any, on the upcoming 2020 Employee Survey.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll look forward to it. Next, we have item 23, the upset bid process for some property in Waxaw. On August night, the county received an offer in the amount of $23,400 from William H. Howey to purchase a parcel of property owned by Union County of approximately 1.1 acres, as described in the bottom survey. Current assessment of the value, the current assessed value of the property, and that's our tax value, is $23,300 based on valuation. Local government authorized to dispose of real property, seal bids, upset bids, and auctions. Commissioner Simpson, if you would like to address your concerns here?
Sure. I'd just like to have an explanation of the bidding process, how that takes place.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be glad to answer that question for the Commissioner. The county has several different options in disposing of real property, the method that's usually used if it's not. A time-sensitive matter is the upset bid process. You receive an initial bid, which is, as was done here. You advertise that for a period of 10 days. The upset bid has to be equal to, has to be raised, the original amount has to be raised by 10% of the first $1,000 and 5% of the remainder. And then they have to put a 5% deposit on that. And you continue that process for another 10-day period until you have no further upset bids.
I understand. I guess my question is, how is that communicated to those people who may be interested in participating in that process?
Well, it's in the Board's resolution that was adopted to initiate the upset bid process. It's spelled out explicitly how that's done.
And how many correctly submitted bids did we, how many total bids do we have? And how many correctly submitted bids do we have?
There was an initial bid, and there was an attempt to bid, and the upset process, but it was a non-qualifying bid because it was deficient. So you have one bid.
And hence my concern. We often have sealed bids for contractors and one thing and another. And if they don't submit the information properly, then their bid is not considered. So to me, we have one individual who submitted, who went through the process, submitted the bid correctly, dotted all the i's and crossed all the t's. And so it would be my motion that we accept that bid for the property.
I have a question also. Are we obligated to accept a bid?
No, sir.
That comes in like that?
Completely discretionary with the Board.
And I agree with Commissioner Simpson that the process was not accurate the way we should be following. Now, I ask a question which concerned me greatly because the property has a commercial well on it, I believe, one that Waxaw used to use to produce water. Is that correct?
I understand.
Okay. So I asked the manager to have our appraisal department tell us what, basically what the property value was. And it was more than a neighborhood of $45,000 instead of the 23 that was bid. My concern is, these are taxpayers' assets, and I agree with what Commissioner Simpson says on the process, but I would, I'd prefer, like to go back through the process to get a more acceptable bid. I'm looking at houses right now. I'd love to buy them at tax pay, but they won't sell like that. But we have a motion. Commissioner Rushing?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the bid that came in, was a $5,000 check included with the other bid? Is that my understanding?
There was a 5% check included with the initial.
No, I'm talking about the bid that came in without a number.
There was a check in a certain amount. It was more than what would have been 5% of the minimum bid for an upset bid.
Okay.
So that we weren't able to tell. We weren't able to tell what
Barring being able to say that that check, the amount of that check being a 5% bid, which if it depended on the amount, I mean, can we say the amount? Because we said the other amount. What was the amount of that bid? Or that check?
The original check was 1170, as I recall. It was 5% of the original bid.
So there was no check that came in with the other bid?
There was a check and only a check. There was no bid.
What did it say?
The check was the amount of $2,574.
Okay. So, but no correct paperwork?
Well, there was no indication of what the bid is. We have a check in that amount, and that's all we had. So we actually don't know what the bid is. And to be fair in the process, I think you have to have enough ambition of what their amount is so they don't have the opportunity to come in after the fact and say it was either the amount that would correspond to 5%, which is like $51,000, or a lesser amount. I think that it's an unqualified bid for that reason.
Right. Well, I've been to a lot of auctions, and Commissioner Simpson has too. Winning bids, the winning bid. So I'm going to put a motion that if he'd done it the proper way and done it the way it's supposed to, it does send a bad message if we're going to stop doing it that way. And yeah, you got a good deal, but that's the process. I watched a school auction where a $12,000 alignment machine went for 125 bucks. I guess that's one of those cases.
Well, just for the Board's benefit, the upset bid process is a little bit different from that. You have total discretion as to whether you sell the property, whether you re-initiate the process, or whether you sell to the single bidder that you have. It's completely discretionary with the Board.
Jerry, will you restate your motion, please, sir?
Motion is to accept the bid submitted by the one correct bidder.
Okay.
Commissioner Simpson, could I ask that you amend your, or request that you consider authorizing
Speak while I'm rocking.
My apologies. A request that you authorize the manager to take such steps as necessary to give effect to that as well.
Okay. Hasn't ended. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. Next item is 25B. That was some documentation. We have a request from Indian Trail that their Board of Commissioners, after attending the retreat we had, we had excellent communications with 11, wasn't it, 11 municipal offices?
Correct.
And Indian Trail has requested that the Board of Commissioners sit down with their council. And so there's a request, and the question is, is the Board interested in entertaining that joint meeting? Yes, sir?
It would probably be a good idea to meet with all the towns that would like to meet with us. I don't know if, I don't know, I guess what much could be different said than what we said in our others, but it might be something we can do, throw the offer out to the other towns as well. Maybe do meetings. We'll have to do everything in the open session. Maybe do it in a training room as work sessions or something.
My understanding, it'd be a joint meeting, official meeting between the two, kind of like we did at the retreat?
Yeah, that's correct. I understand that the Indian Trail Town Council instructed their manager to reach out with this communication. They wish to have an official joint meeting of the Town Council and the Board of County Commissioners. They, the Town Council, through their manager, listed several topics that they would like to begin discussions about. They see this initial meeting as one where they want to enter into the discussion and try to find that common ground between Union County and Indian Trail in terms of common interest, process for moving some of these items forward. They have interest in some downtown development, some water lines and things like that. They're interested in how they could partner with the county in making sure that these utilities are available when they're ready to do their development. There also, I believe, there's a number of different pieces down there. It ranges from water and sewer utilities to parks to
Track
Fire service and transportation issues. This meeting would be seen as kind of an initial meeting to establish what those topics of common interest are, and then perhaps having a follow-up meeting where staffs would come back and provide clarification, and Boards could make some decisions about how they wanted to work together going forward.
Commissioner Ray?
I'm in favor of it, and I would like for the Board to approve to do it expeditiously. The advantage I see of both Boards meeting is if there's something that we both agree on and know there's no thinking about it, we can get this thing, let's get the foundation laid for future inter-local agreement. So I'll make a motion for the manager to see what time he could set it up as soon as possible.
I agree. I think we got a lot of, nothing but positive feedback from our retreat. And so it was very encouraging. And I think this is the next step to, you know, because they're talking about transportation, they're talking about fire service, and some of our existing policies. And it'll be a two-way street. I know that Commissioner Ray and I had an opportunity to speak with, through their council at the retreat, and I think this is a very positive thing going forward. So, any comments? Commissioner Simpson?
I just concur with Commissioner Rushing. I think it would be important that we support the idea of transparency and have it in a location where it can be televised or live-streamed or
Agreed.
Whatever necessary.
Agreed. Commissioner Ray?
One more thing, and I agree with everything everybody said. The one thing, when me and Richard were talking with a few of the council members, they're just so excited that we would communicate with them. And I think if we do that with all the councils of all the municipalities, we'd start functioning so much better together. So, yes, yes, and yes.
Okay. We have a motion. Commissioner Rushing?
One other thing. We used to have a meeting, a quarterly meeting, with mayors and commissioners. And, you know, I know it's very difficult because it was a two-day ordeal the last time, but if we had something where maybe we could set up some of these meetings with the other municipalities that all get together biannually or quarterly or whatever, that might not be too bad of an idea, especially with the transitions that we're going through with water, sewer, with planning and roads. And that wouldn't be a bad idea. Do we know what night the Indian Trail Town Council meets?
I think it's Tuesday nights that they meet.
They are, they would suggest that this joint meeting happened on a Thursday that was convenient for, if that's convenient for this Board. They would like to have, actually have an early dinner at their town hall facility. I believe it does have live-streaming capabilities, and we can work with them on making that happen. But this is an invitation from them for us to come up there.
Okay. Commissioner Ray, would you accept Commissioner Rushing's amendment to have the manager
Yes.
evaluate the quarterly meetings that we were talking about as well?
That was the last, yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes, and yes.
All right. Just wanted to make it clear. All right. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Great. Next, we have Union County Comprehensive Plan Update and Legends. And if you will come up and share that with us, please, sir?
All right. Wanted to come to you this afternoon. As we were just discussing, you remember, at the end of August, we had the two-day land use retreat over at the Ag Center to begin the process for updating our comprehensive plan. And the comprehensive plan, I'll be brief on a lot of these slides, but just to give you an overview, you saw this slide during the retreat. Just shows how important the comprehensive plan is and the different items and things that the comprehensive plan influences that the county does. We have updated the timeline a little bit. Still the same, still a year. We've kind of put in some dates. This is, the November date is when we hope to have some subcommittee appointments. And that's why I'm here today to talk about. Again, you saw this slide at the retreat. These are the subcommittees that we, staff has proposed. You can see those there from Ag going around, environmental, developer and business, infrastructure, municipal and county planning staff committee, and a citizens committee. municipal and county planning staff committee, and a citizens committee. And then to have people from those subcommittees form a coordination committee which oversees the, sort of the process there. Got a number of public outreach tools that we are going to have as part of this process. Most of these we have already started, at least in some aspects working on. We will have a project website. That is, we have that outline. We're working with IT to get that up and running. We did have the surveys on the initial vision input and scenario feedback. We will post on social media. Our communications department did a great job here recently with the story that they posted about the land use retreat. If you haven't read that, you guys should probably go take a look at it. It's a really, really nice story. But we plan to have more of that, Facebook next door, Twitter. It's getting people involved. People will be able to opt in for email distribution lists. Any updates that we do, they'll get an automatic email on that. And the public meetings. We estimate that we'll have 25 of those. We'll do presentations with community groups. We've already thought about some other, some folks that we're going to reach out to. There will be a link on the website if you want your community group. If you want to request a county staff member to come and do a presentation, we'll be available to do that. Summit's with municipalities. And then our community meetings. So we plan three sets of meetings at key phases in that process. And we're going to spread those meetings out throughout the county. So we don't want to have them at one place. We want to spread them out into, just to make sure we get everybody from the east to the west, to the middle of the county. Those phases, the first phase is the visioning process. That's where we're soliciting input for what people think Union County should look like in 2015. What are the major issues facing the county, and how can we improve the county? Second phase would be the alternatives analysis. That's where we hear things during the visioning phase, and we come up with at least three different land use plans and depictions of what the county will, how are we going to get there? How are we going to get to this vision that's been proposed? And then the last one would be review and adoption. So you have your alternatives analysis, and usually a preferred alternative is selected. It may be a combination of your alternatives that are presented. But at the end of the day, that'll have to be reviewed by the public and ultimately adopted by the board. And then to help us do that, we need these subcommittees. Again, this is kind of a brief overview of those subcommittees. I believe this was presented at the retreat. Citizens, that's our broadest group. That's anyone. Anybody can be on the citizens' subcommittee. The only requirement is you have to be a Union County resident. Agriculture was one of the ones you saw. So farmers, forestry activities, and those other related industries that go along with agriculture. The municipal and county planning staff, that's the staff members of the different municipalities that work every day in planning and zoning. Environmental and stormwater, that could be staff members that work for the communities, or it could be citizen experts. So there are a lot of people that live in the county that have expertise in those areas. And we would welcome those folks to apply for the environmental and stormwater committee. Business and developers, that's land developers, builders, chamber of commerce folks, economic development. We would like those folks to be on our developer and business committee. And then infrastructure, schools, water and sewer, and transportation. And then our coordination subcommittee is we would have a representative and an alternate from each committee, plus two to six appointed community leaders with some broad experience and perspectives that may not, they're not going to be on one of these subcommittees. They are folks that, again, community leaders that can kind of get above the fray. Want those folks on our coordination committee. Membership, eight, 12 people per subcommittee. You don't want too many. If you get too many folks on there, it's kind of hard to manage. If you have too few, you don't get a broad enough perspective. We're going to have outreach. That's kind of why we're here this afternoon, is to start the process for that outreach. We've envisioned a 30-day application period. That could be people submitting applications. It could be nominations by municipalities. It could be the Board of Commissioners nominating people. And we'll have an emphasis on geography. So we don't want, and I don't think anybody wants, membership from one geographic area of the county. We want it spread around so we get good representation of the county. I also want it spread out among the demographic and municipal representation. And ultimately, the board will make those appointments. Our selection timeline, hopefully today, we'll get the approval for this process that I've kind of outlined. About a month, we'll leave the application period open. We do have applications ready to, ready to go there online. So as soon as this process is approved, hopefully tomorrow, those will be out there on our website. October 21st through the 25th, we'll review those applications internally. And again, looking back at the geographic representation, municipal versus county representation, and looking at the demographics of the county, hopefully have a good representation across the board on those subcommittee members. We will review those applications, and we'll make some recommendations based on some of those items I just mentioned. And then come back on November 4th for the board to approve the subcommittee and committee members. And we're just asking you to approve the solicitation process for those subcommittees.
Okay, Commissioner Ray?
Lee, one thing on that citizens committee. I know when you campaign across this county, we have two, basically two areas, urban and rural.
Yes, sir.
And I think it's really important either have a rural committee and an urban committee or have it integrated equally. Because a lot of people in the west assume that there's a lot of things available in the east. It's just not there. And...
And that's one of the reasons why when we talk about how to select those
Geographically.
Yes, sir. We want those spread out geographically throughout the counties just to avoid having too many members from either the east or the west. So we want that representation to represent the county. So we want to have folks that live in the urban and suburban areas in the west and folks that live in the more rural areas in the rest of the county.
And I would encourage you to work with the people to make it at times. We saw this with the citizens advisory board for the schools. Make it at times when they can come to it.
And so once these committees are appointed by the board, we will have special meetings. Because unfortunately, we'll have to select the first meeting. And then once that first meeting's been selected and the appointed members come to that meeting, we will have them adopt a regular meeting schedule that fits their time period, that fits the times that they can come.
One question I have is, we get our committees together. When's this process, when's the completion? When are we going to get back the results of these committees meeting?
Right. So the subcommittees will meet throughout the entire plan development process. Let me jump to the plan. So we're going to have our committee formation. And then these committees will be involved through this entire process. So they will weigh in on every single one of these stages. So you'll have your visioning process, which again establishes, this is the vision we want to see for Union County. So that's not only these subcommittees. But again, you remember, we were going to go out to the community, have community meetings. But these committees, like I said, will be involved throughout this whole process. So they will have a say on every single step. And then ultimately, the committee will determine a preferred scenario and some implementation tools. And that leads us up to our final review and adoption. So there's really not just one process that they're involved in. They're involved in the whole thing.
I'm just looking for timeline and...
I understand. It's about a year. So it'll be about a year, and we'll wrap it up.
Is Mr. Black going to be the point man on this?
So there will be, we're going to divvy up the responsibilities for these subcommittees. We're, as you can see, there's six subcommittees and then the coordination committee. And there will be a staff member that's assigned to each one of those. So we'll divvy that up when those committees are formed.
Dick, you're red-faced back there. Hey, Commissioner Simpson?
Lee, I assume you're going to provide us with sort of a structured document or something that we'll make sure we can get all the committees and make our suggestions for each one, not miss anything?
Yes, sir.
You do that for us?
Right. So we'll leave that application period open for a month. And like I said, we'll make some recommendations based on that geographic distribution. But you guys will know everybody that applied. So if there's someone you want to add that's not in our recommendation, you can do that. But we will provide you with some recommendations.
I think it's important to note that, you know, this is an opportunity for the board to notify people that you're aware of that may be interested in this. Because the only way we're going to get good geographic distribution is if we get interested people from all over the county. So that's the reason for the 30-day timeline. You guys get the word out to folks you know. And obviously, we're doing the same thing. But if you have people you think might be interested, please tell them to apply. Because otherwise, only the people who apply are the only ones we're going to bring to you for you to consider.
Well, if communications will get it out, we can share it. And that way it's written on.
That's good. Any other questions, Commissioner Simpson?
I was just going to make the motion to approve the comprehensive planning process as outlined by staff.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Lee.
Thank you.
You were short. Maybe not as sweet as short. All right. Next, we have county managers' comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A number of events happening this week for the general public. This is Farm City Week. Tomorrow, September the 17th, is the Farm City Tour. It's a day-long activity that leads from the Ag Center. I believe you have to have pre-registered for that event. But there'll be a number of folks that are touring the farms in the county and getting a perspective of agriculture today. On September the 19th is the Farm City Banquet. And I would remind all the commission members that you're signed up to attend that along with a number of staff. That is, I believe that the doors open at 5:30 and the meal is served at 5:45. On September the 20th, there's livestock events. And September the 21st is the 4H Expo and the Heritage Festival held at Agricultural Center. And the Heritage Festival continues to be an event that grows larger every year and is well-attended. And it looks like we're going to have good weather for these events all throughout the week. So I would encourage everyone that can to attend those. Two other things for the board. September the 24th, this is the following week. Commissioner Simpson, Commissioner Agmuss, a number of staff, our Economic Development Office will all be traveling to Kannapolis for a preview tour of the new Food Innovations Lab and research facility. We had had the opportunity, Chair and I had opportunity week before last to travel up there for a preview of that. It's an absolutely phenomenal facility. But we will be looking at that opportunities to work with the Food Innovation Lab in terms of agribusiness recruitment for Union County in the future. If any of you are interested in attending that, if you, please let me know. And we'll make sure that you have the transportation information to go. And lastly, September the 27th, which is a Friday, I'd like to invite all the commission members to come out and participate in the Employee Expo. Again, that'll be held at the Ag Center. Julie, this is the 13th, 13th consecutive year of Union County hosting an expo for its employees. So I would invite you to come out and participate in that. I know several of you have participated in the past. But lunch starts about 11:30, and it's always good. So we want to invite you to come out and participate in that. And with that, I would say have a good evening.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Rushing?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I see good news we got from the Anson County Board of Commissioners on a letter dated September 13th about exploring a partnership to have reliable water supply for both counties. And I think the staff should be commended for their hard work in getting that locked down and finding water for Union County residents. With that, that's all.
Commissioner Simpson?
No further comments.
Commissioner Ray?
No further comments.
All right. And with that, I have no comments, and I'll motion for adjournment.
Aye.
Thank you.